No worries. Thanks. Seven oh one calling this meeting to order. It is November fourteenth. Kay, could you please take the roll? Call.
Nicholas DeFrank.
Here.
Jared Mork.
Here.
Jeff Dablin.
Is muted.
Uh, Nick Missione.
I'm here.
Here.
Tim McGee.
Here.
Cindy Suplesio.
Here.
Jesse Garcia.
Here.
Candace Hart is absent. Ann Crimmer.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Kay. Um, first order of business consent agenda. Any commissioners here with comments um on the uh agenda for the following agenda? And minutes from Kay. By the way, Kay, thanks. Great minutes. Great notes. Appreciate that.
No comments. Move to. Move to approve minutes.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, public or meeting minutes from the September twelfth Planning Commission um have been locked in. Um, on that, we'd just like to take a moment here. Um. On those mentions, you know, I think there was a really good conversation um that happened during that meeting. And so um I'm not, I know. Jeffrey, you the only one that wasn't able to make it for that?
Yeah, I missed that one.
Um, so, so, you know, but and and Kay, very concise in those minutes. You know, I thought it was a great discussion, really a lot of great points there. So an opportunity for. Thank you, sir. Um, for everyone to kind of just have a look and remember it's kind of what we're talking about as a commission and how we can kind of. Continue to move forward, be mindful, be prepared, um, and be thoughtful about, you know, how we approach this uh. This position that we were all volunteering to do and this time that we're all kind of looking to to take care of in the process. So um, just wanting to take a moment there and. Look at that. Uh, with that, moving on, um, as usual, we have a, we have droves of people um waiting to comment. Uh, no, I'm just kidding. Um, if there's anybody online, uh, time to comment for items of persons not on the agenda. All right. Thank you, Kay. No one online and no one in audience. So we're going to move on to action items for this evening. All right. Uh, Jared, would you like to break us into um the? First items as far as the the calendar?
Sure. So I think really this is kind of looking ahead at twenty twenty five. Um, trying to see if there's any sort of um conflicts that you guys. Are anticipating meetings that we should preemptively cancel because we know it's something like spring break for the schools or. Um, historically, Mountain Fair Weekend or other things like that where we know kind of attendance will be challenging. So um really, it's just going to turn it over to you. I believe we put um in there some of the anticipated. Challenges that we we foresee based on past, um, but want to kick it out to you guys just to see what else you all thought.
Great. Thank you, Jared. Um, personally, I love that uh somehow Mountain Fair has elevated itself to being next to Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah, we get.
That's that's when you know you have a special community. Um, and just quickly, those of us with school age children. Just a quick show of hands that are that are impacted by typical roaring fork school holidays. I know I am one. Nick, Jeff, are your kids of age and impacted by those those holiday dates?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little, but we're on a different school schedule, so not always.
Got it. Are are you Waldorf or are you Ross?
Uh, our kids go to Country Day.
Oh, Country Day. Yep, sorry. Okay.
Same here. I mean, impacted, but only partially because of a different schedule.
Okay. Um, well, I guess would love to just kind of hear people's thoughts then. Jared, thank you for and Ellie, thank you for a well organized calendar and outlook. Folks, thoughts on since kind of like the first asterisks I see here are the are for a school uh district stuff. Um, I am biased as I am impacted by those personally as a parent here. Um, anybody else have any input on those? Um, yea or nay?
On like which dates that we want stricken or?
Or, you know, um, well, I guess going back to um, yes, like are does it make sense to remove those? Um, that the kind of the the local break, which I know not only does RF uh roaring force school district. But also Ross and Carbondale Community School all follow that pattern. So any many kids, those schools would be impacted.
Do you know what those breaks are?
Yeah, it's it's on there. It's uh on on page one, it's two asterisk, March twenty seventh.
Yep. I mean, I I think like anytime there's like the the double asterisk, I think that's a pretty good guarantee that we'll have limited participation anyway. So.
Yep.
I think it's just wise to strike them now.
Okay.
Um, I. I don't remember exactly when school resumes, but January ninth is also like a pretty proximal one to when school resumes after Christmas break.
Right. So, well, um, is it safe to start with with what um staff has identified as kind of the double asterisks as far as? Um, is is anyone looking to keep those on or think there's merit in in keeping those? I guess we could call question marks or as as Jerry kind of referenced uh or said, kind of likely limited attendance. Uh, well, with with that resounding response, I I sounds like two asterisks are good to check.
Cancel.
Uh, it's canceled. Yep. Um, any other fringe dates? So Jared just noted kind of January ninth. I don't know when the return to school date is. But clearly, that's kind of in that window of risk. Um. I think um.
That date was applicable last year. So I guess this year. So that's why I'm carrying it over as like a point, but like I don't, I don't know if that would be resounding, but.
Right.
Okay, that was also on a different school.
Got it. Um.
I think we can keep it personally.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on there, Jared, that you would like? I mean, it seems so well organized. I don't know. Um. I guess we're always going to see kind of in that big winter holiday, there there, you know, might be that lingering.
Yeah, I think I think roaring fork goes back on Tuesday, the seventh.
Awesome. Thank you, Jeff.
Twenty-five, it looks like. Um. Didn't see any other big conflicts. My only question would be to staff is if you need, if you need us for something in that time and if it doesn't make sense to. To cancel them now because you need to get something done.
Um, we always need to get stuff done, but you know, I I think um. I think a lot of times we get applications kind of this time of the year and people are identifying. Just after the new year to kind of get those public hearing schedules going again. So I would probably. Say let's keep the January ninth meeting on the schedule and um. You know, if if we don't have anything, I think that's an easy one to say let's cancel because we're just through the holidays. Versus just having a meeting for the sake of having a meeting.
Yeah. So it it might be something then that we could identify prior to that holiday.
We should. We should know by, you know. Early to mid-December.
Okay.
Whether that's going to be a realistic meeting or not.
Okay. Great. Um. Any formal approvals or motions on this? Are we good to keep it loose?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
What about December twenty-sixth? That one seems particularly.
I think that got struck with the double asterisk, right?
It did.
I think so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that that one is.
It's not on the calendar.
Go on the second uh, the second page, Nick, at the very.
Oh, is it page two? Oh, sorry. Okay, I thought that was this year.
No, there was, there was one this year.
Yeah, December twenty-sixth this year.
Yeah, I think that.
That is, that's been canceled.
Okay, good.
And I think that's kind of what we're rolling into next, right? Wait, what are these? The?
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I skipped over also the the page before. For some reason, it was, I was thinking it was after the calendar. Um. But if we want to go back to that exact point, Nick, thanks for bringing it up. At the page before the calendar, um, looking at.
This year.
And if you want to walk us through this, Jared, what so essentially we've, there's two meetings in December, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. Um. And.
Yeah, so I I think historically, um, the town hasn't really held. Those second meetings in December, given.
Yeah.
It's in and around Christmas, Hanukkah, New Years. Um, we don't currently have anything identified for that meeting. So I think, you know, our recommendation would be to cancel that December twenty-sixth meeting. So kind of after tonight, there really only be one more meeting, December twelfth um for the rest of the year.
Okay. Um. In December twelfth, um, there are, it is scheduled up and there is. Or is that one also potentially going to be postponed? Did I read that correctly?
Uh, right now, we don't have any um. Applications, but um given the agenda item that we are throwing on the agenda here at this meeting. You know, I think it would probably be pertinent to have a quick check-in on the twelfth.
Great.
Um, and we can get to that in a, in a little bit.
Okay. Uh, that sound good, Nick? Does that answer your your thoughts on?
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth. Great.
Perfect.
Alrighty, um, moving on, MAP Carbondale. Big product for this planning department.
Yeah, so um first and foremost, um, thank Ann and Cindy for being at the Boards and Commission meeting. Candace was also there. Um, uh, you know, I I guess starting off apologies that it wasn't as collaborative as I think everyone had had hoped. You guys had to almost insert yourself to make comments. Um, but thank you for inserting yourself and making comments. Um, so MAP Carbondale, you know, I I included in the memo, it's been going on for quite some time. We've had a stakeholder commission committee. Um, that's kind of helped guide some of this and a lot of the heavy lifting has been um housed with the Bike Ped Trail Commission. Um, and so. You know, over the the last summer, um, there was that initial public outreach. We got a ton of feedback through the online mapping tool, in-person events. To get um problem areas identified throughout the community. Um, we had a follow-up public outreach event that really tried to help um people prioritize. You know, what type of improvements were most important if we had to make certain type of improvements? And those two public outreaches were kind of. The overwhelming basis for the majority of the recommendations in the plan, what the community told us. We did look at or consultants did look at um a ton of other plans. We looked at the Highway one thirty-three age-friendly Carbondale Plan. We looked at the um access control plan for uh Highway one thirty-three. Um, a lot of data that Kevin had for traffic counts and speeds and accident data. And a lot of that was compiled and um what a lot of that other data kind of told us was. What the public told us was pretty darn accurate with what the data is also backing up. Um, and so. Kind of what we have before you guys tonight is a draft of that plan. Um, it's been broken out into a few different sections. I won't go through them all, but kind of. The meat and bones of it is really um. A kind of uh a toolbox of potential solutions that the town could look at when uh making improvements throughout town. And then a list of identified projects um where those tools should be um implemented. And kind of our consultants' first take at what tools we should be looking at. So um, some of those are within the Highway one thirty-three corridor. Some of those are on local streets like Eighth or Hendrick or. Some are intersections and some are um road sections. And so, you know, they really tried to break it down into a a wide variety of different types. Um, and recommendations that the town can take a plan and start um allocating funding to create. Or or to make improvements to the roadway. Um, one of the other things that that kind of popped up was. Um, the concept of tactical urbanism. And apologize if some of you know what that is, but essentially um take some paint. Take some temporary things, go out to a section, make some very low-cost temporary improvements. And see what the community thinks about it. So um, two areas where that was kind of identified was Hendrick and Eighth Street. Where the consultant said, hey, use this tactical urbanism technique and go, you know, put some stuff out to reduce. Um, curb radii to narrow the street, paint some bike lanes with some temporary paint. Um, throw up a crosswalk, add some bollards in the middle to kind of create a more narrow street. And then give it some time, ask for feedback from the community and see if this is truly what the community wants before going and building. The infrastructure, the raised crosswalks, things like that. Um, and so, you know, that was kind of provided in the plan as an example of how. Um, some of these techniques can be done, not only on an intersection or a crosswalk, but how you could apply some of these tools across a. Um, larger kind of area of town. So um. Hopefully it gives you a little bit of an overview of what's before you, kind of next steps are um the Board of Trustees. Um, Tuesday night requested that the um plan be presented to them at their second meeting in um January. So we are asking kind of some of the other boards and commissions, not just Bike Ped Trail, kind of what they think about this plan, if they have comments on it. If they've seen some stuff when they look through of things that we need to um potentially update or change, or if. You know, they want to send a formal recommendation to the Board of Trustees for either adoption or not adoption. Um, and so that that's really kind of the purpose of tonight's meeting with you all is um giving an opportunity to look through, provide us feedback. Um, if you guys need some more time, we have a little more time. We have another meeting in December where, you know, we can. Forward comments at that point. Um, but ideally, we'd like to get all the comments kind of uh. Round it up and sent to our consultant by early December so that they can spend kind of the uh second half of December to beginning of the new year. Making some changes and presenting a final draft to the Board of Trustees. Um, in that time, I would also give the Plan Zoning Commission an opportunity to say we would like to, or we would not like to, or we just want to stay out of it. Make a recommendation to the trustees if you guys feel strongly one way or another. Um, hopefully it gives you a little bit of overview and um summarizes it. Um, otherwise, I am. Happy to answer any questions. Um. I Candace did provide some comments and I haven't had a chance to read them all, so um I can read them and then share them with you guys. Um, or just forward the email, uh, whatever's easiest.
Why don't we start with um, suggestion is live comments for those of us who have opinions, who've been part of it in some manner, who've read it and. If we run aground, then we can bring up the uh Candace's comments um when we run out of kind of in-person stuff. Um, thanks for that intro, Jared. Um. And in general, I I just. You honestly want to applaud, you know, town staff. This is really a, an awesome document. As someone who, you know. Works at these day in and day out, I think it's, you know, for, I I think it's always exciting to see when this town gets a product like this as well organized, as well published. So um, I I personally enjoyed digging into it and I thought it was, you know, easy to to get into. What are, you know, any, any thoughts, general, specific? Digging into this? Um. What do you got, folks?
Um, I can go first. Um, Jared, I was looking at the Eighth Street Pilot Program on page um sixty-seven. Um, and I noticed that off of Eighth Street in Garfield, they put the planner boxes suggesting um suggestion over um. Off of the east side of Garfield. Um, as you can see with that side, the west side has more vegetation. I wonder if those um planner boxes would. Be better placed on the west side along that vegetation. Um, when you're coming out of Garfield and trying to. Make that left-hand turn to get out to Main Street, um, because cars do park there. It's pretty hard to see. Um, due to the vegetation and then the cars that are parked there add a little bit of obstruction of oncoming vehicles. So I I wonder if they would entertain. Switching the planner boxes to the opposite side. Um, I know that eliminates parking for what I believe is the town right-of-way. Um, for those homes um. On the corner there of Garfield and Eighth. But that's one suggestion that I've uh I've personally experienced is trying to make that left-hand turn. It's pretty difficult with oncoming traffic and the vegetation and the parking. Um, of vehicles there.
Certainly.
That is one specific comment, Jared. Wow, amazing.
Um, if Jesse's finished, I have one. Uh, I think looking through these, they kind of identify. Obviously, the same spots, the same at least main three spots that people actually come in and talk about. Uh, typically in our public comment kind of things. I don't see any specifics of like what they're recommending. You know, they're like, hey, you could do this, you could do this. And there's like multiple pieces put here. And then the only place that kind of maps out where they're. Where the plan is going, that zero to five-year timeframe of like the town as a whole. Like, it just says intersection projects, but it doesn't really specify like what. What should be the direction or like what our direction would be going. I think. If we spend all this time on here, I would like solid recommendations for what these things should be and not have so much overlapping suggestions that you kind of get bogged down with. Well, what is best, right? Like if if the same big three spots had, you know, only three suggestions instead of. I don't even want to try to count how many there are on there. I think that would make it a lot easier and a lot, you'd get a lot more support from the community if they could. Pick one instead of having so many options presented to them. Okay, or like, and even then, if there were, if nothing's really solidified, um, I think just an overall. Map that shows like what they're thinking would be a lot better instead of. I don't know. I only see one plan kind of thing here, you know? I think it'd be nice if it was blown up or parted out. Uh, you could probably split that between two pages. This looks like it's a two-page document anyway. Um, like a side-by-side.
A full spread.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think you'd have a lot of opportunity to format it between two pages and really blow it up and. Show people what we're thinking.
And you're requested, just so I'm I'm clear, the understanding is that that on on page fifty, that early action improvements is to show.
Yeah.
All improvements as opposed to just the initial zero to five-year improvements.
Well, so, yeah, they, that's the only time that I'm seeing like, okay, this is where we're going to do an intersection project or this is where traffic stuff is. Like, if you look at. Um, I don't know, the the blue page is like twenty-six or whatever, and they keep showing all the maps. They're just kind of highlighting the same areas and it's like, well, which, which one should we do? What what would be the project unless I'm. Not understanding that we're going to do all of these things in these locations.
Correct. Um, yes, so so that kind of toolbox um was intended to be. Kind of a guide to the town of here's what the tool is. And here's where the tool is going to bring some alignment with the guiding principles. And here's some of those things that we need to. You know, be concerned with. The example improvement areas was only intended to show a couple. Not even to be a priority. So kind of go into page eighteen, multimodal intersection treatments.
Is that eighteen of the document or eighteen of the PDF?
Eighteen of the.
PDF.
The document.
So the side number, not bottom number.
Side number, correct.
Page twenty-eight.
Sorry, I I just pulled it up.
It's all right.
We're we're ten pages behind, Jared, or ten pages ahead, Jared. So it's twenty-eight in our packet.
Twenty-eight, okay.
Twenty-eight in the packet. Um, so so that kind of map is really only intended to be like, hey, within the. Entire scope of all the improvements, here's three of the places where that was recommended. That's not even intended to be, here are the top three priorities for that type of improvement. Second to Main, Hendrick and Greystone, Eighth and Garfield could all be done, but there's a whole host of other. Um, intersections where curb bulbouts could be effective.
Right.
Um. So maybe those maps are a little less. Effective in the grand scheme of things if they're giving you kind of the feeling of.
It's just too much copy and paste and like.
Yeah.
Not enough s- s- specific information for what we're trying to do there. And maybe there is no master plan for it. Maybe we don't have. A lot of these suggestions put in place with this, but I I think that would be the best way to say, hey, this is. This is what we want to see here, right? Like in. Uh. In our comprehensive plan update, right? Like we had this neighborhood, this is the type of stuff we want to see. This is what we're thinking. Like we had genuine suggestions in there. And I think. If we're wanting to make a suggestion, I I don't know, I'm just seeing too much of the same finger point in between all these maps.
Fair. Um, when with the RFP initially, um, we the 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 scope of the project wasn't to provide. Very many site-specific improvement plans. It was really just to kind of give us that.
Thirty thousand foot.
Thirty thousand foot of what we can do. And the thought behind that was um. We didn't want the plan to get bogged down in having a specific um. Road section or a very specific development plan that we were kind of forced into taking into action. When we hadn't really done any site-specific engineering work to say, is this even reasonable or possible? So um, we really just wanted to identify that the higher level issues and then allow that site-specific improvement plan to kind of be developed. With the town. Um, and so that was kind of a conscientious choice of the the plan as opposed to to being very specific. Um, and so that's why you only see really the two examples of Hendrick and of Eighth of. Here's how we could get into more of a site-specific plan of what we want this development to look like. Um, or this. Street to look like with very specific, do this here, do this here, do this here.
Okay, so we're, we're really not trying to be specific. We're just saying, here are our options, here are things, here's why these options are. Good for specific purposes, right? It's more of like just an educating document instead of a guiding document.
Or an action.
Correct. And and then I think that action list that we get in section five, maybe page fifty-five in your guys' packet, if you're ten pages behind me.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that's where it was, you know, a more of that project-specific, like the. you know, a more of that project-specific, like the second item there, Eighth and Sopers Intersection Improvements, install curb bulbouts. Because that's gonna help us achieve the safety, mobility and connectivity guiding principles. And so that's where it is much more specific of do this there. Um, where we struggled was including maybe ten to fifteen priority projects versus including the entire list of projects. And the Bike Ped Trail Commission was pretty adamant that they wanted to see the laundry list of projects. So that they could go through, I, I think the intent is that they could go through when they're helping Kevin develop a improvement plan, say, okay, well, we're still in the five to year, zero, zero to five-year section. We want to tick off Garfield and Went, Hendrick and Barber and Eighth and Sopers next year. So let's figure out how much that's gonna cost. Let's put it in the CIP budget and let's work on those projects.
You know, it, it's that cost thing that I was gonna add on to what Jared was saying, um, until you, you kind of explained the process a little bit and the intention here. It, it might have been nice as kind of a, kind of a bow on top as you are all now enjoying your budgetary process for the year, um, to somehow, you know, they're saying every three years just needs to be updated. What would it look like looking at three years of budget? Is there some way of, of tying that in? You know, with Kevin's guidance, with staff's guidance, um, so that there is just something that, I mean, there's a lot. And, um, I, I think the fear with, with great plans like this is, um, they become partial dust collectors. Um, and, and this is, you know, there's so much in here. Be great to encourage, you know, it's, it's use, it's review, it's, it's like, um, so just, just, just one thought, I'm, I'm not saying it needs that, it was just something that kind of came up in.
Um, I just wanted to add at the, um, Bike Peds Trails, I probably have it out of order. They, we, I did ask Kevin, like, budget-wise, since there were so many things on the zero to five, if that was actually attainable or not. And he kind of gave a, it was a nod. It was a vague yes, but it was a, a yes. Um, but the other thing I noticed is, um, I think the list maybe needs to be updated. Cause I think some of the projects, I know the, um, Athan Village Intersections, those have been completed. So I, I I live right over there. Um, but can, are we able to update that list with Kevin's help or? Just because I think the process was so long, some of these are, are possibly done.
Um, yeah, I mean, we can, we can remove stuff that we know is complete for sure, um.
Or, or leave it on, let it be low-hanging fruit that you're already ahead of the game.
Right? We, and, and to be frank, like, there was some of the stuff that we knew was coming down the pike last year when we got that initial kind of project list. And so Kevin's work for this year had already been informed by this. And so some of the stuff he was pursuing were
Cause I know that they were looking at the capital improvements on Tuesday. Um, and he had money in for the future roundabout. I think that was at year four and five or something. I don't remember off the top of my head. Um, but it, I, I think it'd be helpful to know the ones that are actually truly planned versus we'd like to do. But I don't know if that's too much information for this document.
I don't really know. I don't really know the relevance of the relevant guiding principles, like all the different letters. To me, that just seems to, I don't know, it's too busy. But if this is in connection with the zero to five map afterwards, which it seems like it is, I, I think either like a logo or like color coding or something in place of the guiding principle letters. I think that would be much nicer, uh, and help you kind of track between these things a little bit better. Because it looks like it relates, but then you turn the page to the map and it's standalone.
Yes.
It's not, it's not apparent that they blend.
For what it's worth, that was a specific request from the Bike Ped Trail Commission.
Really?
They are very, um, they, they're very sensitive to making sure that the projects tie back to the guiding principles that they assign to this project. And so, um, that was a very specific request from them to include that.
Yeah.
I, I, with that being said, I definitely hear what you're saying and, um, agree that it is.
They are called.
It's not very straightforward, right? I, I don't know how having something as, you know, joyful or equitable or adaptable is necessarily gonna change.
No.
How we move forward with implementation, but maybe within the Bike Ped Trail Commission, there is something where they say, okay, well, we want to focus on all the ones that increase mobility choice as opposed to, as, as opposed to just being fiscally responsible. So I.
Right. And they have the definitions at the start and then they call them out in like whatever, you know, multi-use pathway trails is the one I'm on currently, right? And this says, this one is all of these things. It has the logos, you understand it a little bit more completely, but, uh, as far as a matrix is concerned and how legible that matrix is, to me, I think that just doesn't make sense. And yeah, it's guff. It doesn't make the document any more efficient.
Fair.
Is, is there, with, with respect, you know, in respect to bike head trails, um, that they, that they want this, I, I, I think it's, I hear, I hear that. Maybe that column could just go to the far right. Just to allow for, you know, we, we can't take it away. It's, it's their request. So to, to respect that commission. Unless you want to march in there yourself and have a discussion with them.
I, I would love to labor people on efficiency, but you know, I, I agree. I think that's a fair thing, but if we can just add.
So I, I, I did notice as I was going through it, having that at center line, I noticed that my eyes were going, were more toward the jumble of letters and trying to like, then just, you know, getting into. So I mean, maybe it's just, it could be a small compromise.
Jared, and I was looking for some clarification on page fifty-four of the PDF. They have Garfield and Went pedestrian crossing? I don't know that those streets do, are they referring to them as separate?
They've been a few times in the document. I think they're referring to their, the crossings, correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, but they each have crossings, but they don't actually intersect. And so they both have challenging, crossing challenges. But with the amper sand, it does at first, like I actually was like questioning my knowledge of town in, like roads. I was like, wait, do these streets cross? Cause it, it happened with, it happens with, uh, Garfield and Went. There were at least one or two other examples of that too.
Cause the other ones seemed to definitely cross, like Hendrick and Barber, Hendrick and Grace, Greystone. Um, but yeah, that one, the Garfield and Went caught my attention on.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I know there's sections of Garfield that run along, uh, Highway one thirty-three that it bumps out to, but it stops at Sopers Park. So I, I don't know if that was intended to be how they wrote it, but.
There's a bunch of other small like nits that I can find. I don't know if, like, it's a big document. I, I could take. I have definitely not digested a lot, but is, uh, someone going through with like those really detailed changes? Typos and all that, uh, even just the place, I'm noticing placement on roundabouts, page forty-four or page thirty-four, depending on where you're looking. And the arrows for where the roundabouts would be are just very strange, but. Um, so that's one thing. I don't know, Jared, if you have an answer to that, um, as a, is there a copy editor on the consultants, on the consulting staff?
There is, and, and we have kind of a list already started of typos and some of the minor kind of formatting type issues.
Well, I don't need to belabor that. From, from a high level, I really love the document. I like a lot of the ways that they're presenting ideas. And I liked the repetition in a way, even though I agree with Jared, it's like, it's a lot to digest. And even a short priority list would make a big difference. And Jared, what you kind of introduced with, I thought was really great. And hearing that there is low-cost kind of experiments that we can do that might help us prioritize the bigger, more expensive projects. I'm excited about those, especially the really simple pedestrian, um, uh, bollards in the middle of the street, like some of those calming patterns and paint for bike lanes and even more narrow intersections, if we can pull that off. Love all of that. Um, I would also be interested in like picking one or two of the really expensive ones with the ten-year timeline and saying, which one of these are we gonna focus on? So that we can take the baby steps with CDOT and leverage all the work that kind of the, the age of place community has been, uh, has been busy doing. So if that's an underpass that would cost multi-million dollars at the Rio slash bus stop Billage Road area, which I noticed and for me, that was like a new idea. I had not seen that in a plan, in a town plan before. But if that's something, just for instance, that we, that we're interested in, and we know it's a ten-year project, what are the first small steps we can take to explore that with CDOT? So those are, those are just a few of my comments from a really high level.
And in the case where the town is actively saving for projects, like the round, like the, the new roundabout. That should also, you know, similarly, I think to what you're saying, Jeff, you know, if, if, if moves are being actively made, um, in a significant financial sense.
Yeah, especially if it concerned the Rio and Rafta and, uh, CDOT all in one project. I mean, we know, we know what it takes to pull that off and it's gonna be a lot of years, so. You know, I, I've sat on the commission long enough to hear stories of roundabouts on one thirty-three and I got pretty excited about what the um, age-friendly community was doing with their, just their relationship with CDOT. That was very cool. Let's leverage that.
Thanks, Jeff. Nick, Kim, what say you?
Uh, Kim, you want me to go first? Okay, um, it wasn't lost on me that a lot of the tools in the two lo- toolbox, um, that I thought would be most effective were also the most expensive. Um, that said, I would just wanna echo what everybody else in the room is saying, the low-cost testing, um, painted bike lanes in particular along Hendrickson. Um, page sixty-six of the PDF, um, in particular was, I thought a great idea, if for no other reason than to educate the cycling community that Hendrick, Hen, sorry, Hendrick Drive, was a terrific way to get, you know, around um, the most dangerous parts of town and could easily, easily be expand, be expanded even further, uh, through the southern part of town. All the way to, um, to Prince Creek, which I think is where a lot of the traffic ends up going. Um, so, you know, Hendrick Drive, bike lanes, A Street Bike Lanes, those two pilot pro- programs make a ton of sense. And then page thirty-six of the PDF, I thought was particularly interesting. Uh, bike ped grade separated crossings, uh, for bicycles and pedestrians to get across one thirty-three in particular. Um, I think they identified on their thumbnail map on that page, their location was, you know, the Rio Grande Trail uh, and one thirty-three intersection, which I think makes a ton of sense. Uh, but I could see bike ped grade separated crossings in several locations along one thirty-three, but I imagine that's gonna be pretty expensive.
On average, they run about ten million dollars each.
Ten million dollars.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, we're, we're just happening to be doing one right now. Um, we're in just beginning CDs, uh, three-year process and they're no joke.
I think Assault got it done for six, I think. I was before and Glen Woods was like fifteen or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I know they're being done, um, all over the Roaring Forest Valley. Um, and they're, they're very effective. I think they would be particularly effective for Carbondale. Um, but I know it's gonna be a lot of money and a lot of money is probably tied up in regulation. So maybe that'll change.
Well, that's exactly the project I was talking about that would need that multi-partner uh, coordination and a lot of funds from the state and elsewhere to make it happen. And I'm, I'm interested in the same thing, Nick. So knowing that's a eight to ten-year project.
Right.
I'd love to hear the, the, you know, town council just put their opinion on, this is the highest priority multi-partner project for one thirty-three. Because we're not gonna get three of these things.
No, we're not.
But it would be, it would be very interesting to say, we want to take that first step, whether it's another roundabout or one of these grade separated crossings. And just take it one step at a time.
Yeah. Yeah. But in general, I, I, I think this is a great document. I really appreciated all of the tools being explained, described and illustrated and, you know, a first pass at locating. Um, I, I think, I think it's a great, great first step. I'm looking forward to see how this develops.
Great, thanks, Nick. Miss Kim.
What a document. It's a heavy lift. Um, I, I thought that again, like everybody else is saying, um, it, it's extremely detailed and it was good. I agree with a lot of Jared's comments on things that could have been presented a little bit differently or that might not be needed. Uh, but as far as the actual proposals and all of the ideas, it's great to have them all consolidated. I feel like, um, I'd love to see them prioritized even more so, but again, having everything all in one place, it's good to be able to see it. I was a little bit, um, overwhelmed by all of the comments from the public toward the end. It felt like that might have been a little bit extensive. But as far as what we're pushing for and what we're trying to do, I think Jeff's suggestion is brilliant. If we could prioritize some of the smaller things and then, you know, understand, okay, what, what would board of trustees really support? Like what, what one big thing could we push toward for one thirty-three? So, um, I, I really don't have very many original thoughts at the moment on the topic, but I, I agree with what everybody's saying. It's it's quite a document. So good place to start.
Great, thanks, Kim. I may, I may have already said this, but just as a note, the town is actively considering, I mean, the roundabout is dated for what, twenty twenty-seven?
One thirty-three and industrial.
Yep, that is the roundabout. We are designing it. Um, we need to acquire funding, but we are designing it in hopes of constructing that in the nearish future.
Yes. Right.
That, that being said, that's what I, my only, I went to the meeting and the meetings got a little off track. There were a lot of people there complaining about a lot of things.
In this town?
And it wasn't, we weren't really, we got way off track. There was lots of speeding and people cutting around CRMS and but I, I, my concern was they, I don't know how closely they looked at the master plan and like that in particular, that roundabout, like supposed to be coming through to Eighth Street, right? And then there didn't seem to be a plan in here that, um, addressed that or even included that, or maybe how that would affect Eighth Street, cause Eighth Street was a big discussion for most of the night.
Right.
You know, about everything from the speeding to its rural, um, Designation to no sidewalks to just everything came out on A Street and I don't know if. You know, if they could address. The roundabout coming through and how that they could change it based on that. Instead of, I don't want to be short sighted and just have them do thing, all this stuff on Eighth Street and then all of a sudden. It changes because they're going through Eighth Street and not down Merrill. And now, now what? Now what, what are we expecting on Eighth Street? That's all. I think that was one thing that was. And I, I didn't know how far in the future was, but I know that is, it, it is being addressed and. I've had a lot of people from the, the little condos there, what's it called? The Carbondale Place? They're having a lot of meetings about that thing coming back behind them. I've been invited to like three meetings. I'm like, I don't. I don't want to go to your meetings, but people are starting to talk about it, just so you know. And that, then that's why I thought it might come up here at this meeting, but. A lot of stuff came up and that was, that wasn't even mentioned. I did feel bad about that dog that got run over. So I just want to make sure this plan is kind of on track with the master plan. And that we're not being short sighted about what's going on here compared to what we're thinking is going to come on down the road. And hopefully not that far down the road.
Right, because that industry way, Eighth Street connector. And that's pretty much part and parcel with the roundabout. So. I think to your point, you know, there will, there is. A series of traffic conditions that it's expecting to impact. And I guess, I mean, I, I appreciate that, that thought that, you know, well, what? What are the expected impacts and how does that?
How will it change it or how can we help change it the way we'd like, they would like to see it or we, people want to see it?
Do that. Well, I'm just curious, has there been any talk of integrating? You know, a future. Transportation, multimodal transportation. Map with. The comp plan. You know, taking two innovative products and combining them into one so that there's a one kind of stop and shop location for the future. Of Carbondale.
I, I would suspect that the next update. To the comprehensive plan would incorporate. This mobility and access plan, not word for word, but at least. You know, maybe trying to pull out what the comp plan or the community says is the highest five, ten, whatever priorities. And putting that up into the comp plan.
By definition, the role of a comp plan is to point and look at other documents. Developed by the town within its recent update window.
Right, maybe just as an overlay that can be turned on and off in a GIS fo- format kind of thing.
It's very fancy because I was thinking more just kind of old school page numbers.
That would be cool.
Drag, I will do everything I can to drag people kicking and screaming into the twenty first century. It doesn't seem that hard to me, but maybe that's just me.
I like it, Nick. Lay it over.
Is the alternative to include all hundred and fifty six pages of this plan in our, in our next update of the comp plan?
For what it's worth, I think it's really going to be the first sixty four pages that most people look at. They're going to just avoid all appendices.
Please save us from even sixty four pages.
I've been reading the comments to my kids to put them to bed at night. It's very works like magic. It's good for that, for sure. Can I ask what this document in this process, um, costs, uh, Jared? Just. Not in a negative way, just wondering.
No, no, um, I'm, I'm trying to think. I want to say it was roughly. Says maybe about a hundred and ten. I want to say.
And was that the original budget amount or were there?
No, so the original budget amount was seventy five. And. Staff expanded it slightly for public engagement and then, um. The Bike Ped Trail Commission expanded it, um, due to, uh.
Those letters.
Some of the additional changes that they wanted specifically, those five letters or seven letters. Jared's letters.
My own personal.
Ten thousand dollars litter.
So, so yeah, that's, it, it. It is over budget. Um, it's over. Uh, it's original kind of supposed to be at a one year plan, but.
That was on my intent to, to do that at all.
Understandable, yeah.
Anybody here can really comment on that. We totally did that. Exact same thing with the comp plan.
Absolutely. I, I just think it's, it's really important to keep in kind of an eye on. What documents like this cost, both time and, and kind of financial resources. Just to kind of a good reference.
I, I will say though, I think the additional work that the. Bike Pet Trail Commission put on this plan, made it a significantly better plan than what we had at that. Seventy five thousand dollar level. So I, I do think it was money well spent, but, um, yeah, I, I think it is appropriate to. Keep that in mind, so appreciate that.
Um, and, and it, it feels like a quality document. It really does. It, it reads well. It looks well. It shows well. I think the thing that I would like to see, I think I've already told you is like a, a little bit, you know, better improve, you know. You know, just, just little things tying it together as far as a few figure identifications, making sure labels are. There, um, it, it's, it's, I think it's so close to being, it's a very smooth document. So just kind of like nitpicking and hopefully just keeping on the consultant in the eleventh hour or two. To deliver it really tight with it, with that final round of comments.
And then I'm, I'm happy to kind of try to summarize, uh, Candace's comments if you guys want. So, you know, she said it was a. Overall, she's impressed with the study, kind of echoed a lot of your guys' thoughts. Thought it would work well with P and Z and the comprehensive plan and implementation. She appreciated that the plan focused on. Not just Highway one thirty three, but throughout town and really gave a lot more tools for all of our intersections. She did have a few kind of questions and comments for the, um. For the consultant kind of, um, with regard to the roundabout suggestions and their recommendations on that. And. Really appreciated kind of the, the Eighth Street and Hendrix and the recommendations on those first two big projects. And then echoed kind of some of your guys' thoughts about how do we get working with C dot on. The C dot related items so that it's in there. In their hopper and we don't just get forgotten for all of C dot's other items.
A couple of things we, we didn't talk about, um, Nikki from, she was age friendly. She mentioned, uh, declaring one thirty three a main street. That, that was something that the Board of Trustees actually has to do. As well as adopting, uh, the complete streets. Plan, I don't, I don't know enough about that, uh, but that was mentioned and I don't know enough to say whether it's good or bad. My gut says that's probably good, but it could tie us to things. So we need to be careful about that. But I know there are people on P and Z that probably know a lot more about that. And might, might be able to comment. Just a personal thing, I'd like to remove speed humps as a possibility and just go with speed tables. Just because I think they stink. The tables, I, I'd prefer, um, I know there's a massive price difference between the two. And the other thing I noticed, and I think it happened with the comprehensive plan also. Is that, um, people working on it want a little more defined action plan. Cause it came up with, um, bike pads. That they wanted to know how to attack the signage. And the consultant's like, well, we just do it organically at the same time and they were like. And, and I think what some of the volunteer committees are looking for is, uh, these are the steps like we identify. The points that people want to find and where that way, way, I think they need it broken down. And I know there are probably people that are talented at doing that, um, but that's what I got from their discussion on it. Um, and I don't know that the consultant understood that that's what they were asking for. But as I thought about it, I think. Yet they just, you know, want to, this is how you do it, A, B, C, D. And then my other just general thought that's not necessarily on map Carbondale is I would love to see. The walk signal timing changed on anything that has an actual signaled intersection so that pedestrians, if they push the button, that they have. Maybe a five second head start before traffic. Village and, uh, one thirty three comes up a lot. And that one, you have a lot of pedestrian conflict because Rafta is always turning right or left onto one thirty three. They're never going straight and same with the traffic on Village and I assume there's the same problems at the other lighted intersections. But that's probably a C dot request. Uh, since it's their signals.
And now is it the time, do you punch it and it says ten seconds and then?
But it, the light goes green immediately, so if you were turning onto one thirty three, there are pedestrians in the crosswalk.
Oh, immediately.
Immediately. Which I'm sure is scary for the pedestrians. I'd be scared to have Rafta like wanting to turn me, turn into me. But that's like easy fix conflict if programming is available to do that. I think that was it. I, I think Nikki did a, it sounds like she did a ton of work. With C dot and understanding the intersections and the conflicts and. I'm, I'm impressed. I'm sure it was a lot of time.
Great document.
Thanks. Yeah, yeah, we'll certainly forward these comments. Do you guys want us to come back with a draft? Letter of recommendation or would you prefer to sit that out? Open to either.
Is any commissioner against supporting this plan formally in? Uh, with, with a letter for Jared's staff?
So with.
Similar to like our other supportive. Paper that we, that we wrote, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, similar to that.
Because we have, we have all the comments. I feel like we've shared what we need to. Out of this, I don't think I'm going to get anything more other than just nitpicking and graphical things like that and that's not my job, so I'm not going to do it. So I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, sounds good. We can work on that and bring it back and have it for you guys to review your next meeting or the first meeting in January and.
Sounds great. Go from there. Yeah, happy to support you guys on the, the good effort. Thank you. All right, moving on, um, staff update.
Can I add one more action item slash staff update? How does that sound?
Sure.
One of these and pass it around. So, sorry, all of you online. I will try to do a reader's digest. I'll get this emailed out, so, um. The trustees have scheduled biannual work sessions, biannual, biannual. Twice a year work sessions with the Planning Zoning Commission. Semi annual. And the next one was supposed to be Tuesday, November nineteenth. Talked with Nick since, um, we hadn't met in quite some time. Um, neither has felt it was appropriate to have a work session with the trustees until, um, we could at least kind of talk about. What we want to talk about with the trustees, so, um, kind of in the spirit of what we do every, uh, twice a year. You know, we kind of summarized what has been going on, um, so far this year with the major, major accomplishments have been. Big approvals and then on the second page of this. Really kind of talk about what some of those maybe high level discussion points are. So, um. The first five things and I'll read them out for you guys online. Is items that the Board of Trustees identified on Tuesday at the meeting. While most of us were talking about other things, um, that they would like to discuss and so. Some of them are, I think, very straightforward. Some are, um, maybe a little less so, but, um. A desire to kind of, I look at parking requirements and maybe adjusting those up, down, across. What that might kind of entail, um, requiring a mobility study, something focused on more bike ped. Issues as in addition to traffic studies for new developments. Revisiting the traffic impact fees, which aren't really. Something that this board needs to consider. That's really a public works. Requirement, how we calculate, it's essentially how we calculate it. If you're increasing traffic levels by X vehicle trips per day, you need to provide X amount for roadway improvements. One of the big ones that I know this group, um, struggled with a little bit, we're building setbacks along one thirty three in the mixed use zone district. The essentially requirement that we have of. Landscape minimum at ten feet and building setback maximum at ten feet, which creates a ten foot wall of. Green to built environment. And can we kind of adjust the UDC to rectify that? And then, um, another item, which is really not even a discussion requiring, require, requiring renderings at the eye level. As opposed to those lovely giraffe shots that have sopress in the background of every building. And then when the building gets built, sopress is nowhere to be seen, so, um. Those are some of the ones I think, um, in, in my opinion, kind of one and two, one and four might be the. Biggest ones that are worthy for, um. Commission and trustee conversation, you know, getting clear direction from each body, providing some input on. If we're going to tackle these, wh- what are some of the tools we need? And I'll, I'll pick on parking requirements as an example. I think when the trustees told you guys to go deal with, um, affordable housing requirements. Without any kind of resources to. To, to get studies or get information, it was really difficult. And so I think, you know, in this conversation, if we're talking about parking requirements, do you guys feel that in order to adequately? Have a conversation about parking, we need to bring in some sort of consultant to help educate on what are. Industry standards, what are, um, other mountain communities similar to us doing? What is our current? Parking load for certain types of development? What is parking availability in certain areas like the downtown core? You know, so I think there's things like that that could be worthwhile in that conversation of saying, sure, we're happy to tackle this. Maybe we need X, Y, Z. To make sure we're having informed conversations on that. And then. The, the last three items that I threw in here, um, are. Are items that I, I kind of picked up from conversations. So one is, um, the BOT wants. You know, how, how the BOT can maybe provide this body a little more clarification. And direction when they're asking you guys to pursue code amendments such as. Are they looking for this in two months and you guys need to buckle down and do something quick and dirty or do they really want you to? Kind of dive into it for the next year? Are they looking for something very small and simple or are they looking for kind of that deep dive? So I, I think that would be helpful. One thing I've noticed is, um, you know, the process for P and Z appointments has kind of morphed. Since I got here. Sorry, thank you all in, you're welcome all in one. But you know, it's gone to this, uh, trustee interview. And, and in my observation, I think there's been a few appointment interviews that have been very, um. Productive where the trustees have asked very thoughtful questions. And we've had a few where the trustees didn't ask any questions. And so I think, you know, it might be beneficial for, for this group and for the trustees if. Maybe there's a little conversation about, hey, if you guys aren't really gonna. Spend maybe some of the time required to, to ask thoughtful questions of people you're asking to make decisions on your behalf. Is that something that you want to ask this board and commission to have kind of an initial interview process with? And then bring that information up and maybe it's the, the chair who kind of relays. Where the P and Z felt on it and then ultimately have the, uh, trustees make a decision. So. I thought that could be a topic worthy of conversation. And then the last one are, you know, forward looking, are there certain UDC amendments that you guys are kind of looking at? Wanting to tackle. One thing I know that's been on the radar for quite some time is ADU regulations. Um, another one that I kind of identified from our planning conferences, landscape requirements. The, uh, for what it's worth, the state of Colorado has prohibited communities. From requiring non-functional turf grass anywhere in their community. Um, and I think that goes into effect sometime next year, maybe end of next year. Non-functional turf are things that are a very nebulous term, but as a quick example. Grass in medians in roadways. Others can be landscape islands in parking lots. Stuff like that. And I think the thought is to kind of reduce water consumption. But with that being a requirement, I kind of heard that and said, ooh, our landscape requirements are gonna be. Soon to be illegal. So I thought that might be something where, where we put it on the, uh. The docket of, do we want to kind of look at, at, uh, updating those, maybe add some more water wise? Techniques into those requirements. So just a few thoughts, one to throw it out to you guys, get an initial conversation and then lastly, um, pick a date. So there's two kind of dates that have been identified. The first date is December seventeenth, which is the trustee's next work session. And the second date would be January fourteenth, which is the, um. First regular meeting in January for the trustees. A work session is obviously a time where they have more opportunity to chat. Whereas a regular meeting, it's kind of a very defined period and we have to move on to the next agenda item, so. Wanted to see kind of from a, uh, availability perspective, are you all available? Are most of you available? Do you really have a preference for one day or the other? So. Sorry for dumping you on this to you here at the meeting, but, um. Just kind of popped up and, and wanted to at least have this conversation initially tonight. We can talk about it more at the December meeting.
November nineteenth, we're trying to pick one of these two days.
Correct.
I for one would like to push it to January. I just. I've got too much stuff going on right now and everybody's in town in December, so that's off the table.
Nick on that. You are?
Yeah, I'm swamped.
January two, cause we'll find out.
Are we allowed to? Give a different date, like the, the January work session instead of the January regular meeting or will they not go that far out?
Unfortunately not. The, the first three work sessions in twenty twenty-five are jam packed.
Okay.
So, um, we were trying to find a, a meeting to squeeze in. We didn't want to kick it out to April because your next.
Right.
Update is in March, so. Or May, excuse me.
Between December and January, I prefer January.
One reason to think about, just to kind of go against the grain for a second, devil's advocate. We're already bumping once. I don't know if there's anything here that's, that's. That complicated for us, I mean, really, there's just kind of like Jared said, like two items that are really pertinent to us. As a commission. And we, we, you know, it, it might be a respectful move and just to kind of close it up. You know, take care of it sooner than later, um, is, is just one and I, and not to. Not to disrespect the requests for the kind of like the pre-holidays.
Darn it, you changed my mind.
But something, something to, just to think about. Cause really it's going to amount to a fifteen to twenty minute conversation. And in either way, we'll be meeting. Back here on December fourteenth. To, or wait, yes. Twelfth, thanks, um, to review this, so it, it will be, you know. There will be, it will be more closely associated with that, a little bit fresher perhaps in everyone's minds. Again, just, just throwing it out there is, is another perspective on it. But if, if it's. I'll leave it like that for folks to consider.
I think for me, it's a matter of attendance or not attendance.
Yeah.
Like December is the busiest month of the year. And not be, I mean, it's just because everybody's in town and I'm not talking about family. I mean, all my clients are in town and. It's real chaos. I mean, I've got. I can't even. Yeah, it's just gonna be crazy. December's gonna be crazy.
I'm already tired. Looking at my calendar, I'm already exhausted.
Are we gonna vote on it between us or are we just gonna come up with something?
Whatever works best for you guys, I think either date will work for us. I just want to make sure it works for you guys. I think, you know. I, I know there's a, a desire to have that FaceTime where everyone wants to meet with the trustees. It could also be a situation where you say, hey, we wanna. You know, those who contend contend and we wanna delegate Nick as the chair to. Represent kind of our collective thought that we've discussed about. I know some of the other boards and commissions do that, but. I, I can fully respect that you also want to be there and listen, so. Or not listen, participate, excuse me.
Well, but it, it, it does really amount to a lot of listening.
Either way, would we, we would still be, be doing our, our discussion on the twelfth, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We can go around the room. Nick.
Yeah.
Uh, it sounds like you are for January.
Yeah.
Kim.
Either, I can do either.
Jeff.
Uh, probably either.
Cindy.
January.
Anne.
You convinced me, December.
Jesse, either.
January.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like mostly everybody's pretty flexible. There's only three of us who can attend in January and got two for.
Let's, well, we, we, we know kind of where it's at. Let's meet, uh, we are at our December meeting. Do we need to decide right in this moment?
It'd be helpful so we can get on a.
What was the January date precisely, Jared? January fourteenth.
Second Tuesday. I hope I got that right.
Yeah. Second Tuesday.
Looked at my calendar on the wall and had December twenty twenty-three date still up there and I was like, crap.
And Cindy, you said either.
No, I'm the fourteenth, the.
So you're for January, so Jared, Cindy and Nick are all January.
Correct.
And I, I can actually do either. It's just Nicholas was compelling.
Yeah, I, I just like when things are fresh, you know, um, I think we've seen, we, we've had a, uh. We'll call it a recess recently and there's, there tends to be like a little bit of lag time. Um, when we're not in kind of like our, our usual rhythm. And I think we all know that, you know, holiday break is a big one. So the idea of doing this thing on the fourteenth, a couple of days later, um, knocking it out. Having it be fresh, um, after the discussion seems like, uh, it would be, and again, I, I know we're all full. Um, of stuff and family and, and cheer. And yet it is, it is not like one of these meetings now where it's gonna run long. Uh, BOT Ben is very efficient with these, um, and so we will be in and out in. I can pretty much guarantee more likely twenty minutes. So. My vote would be for, for just to, to complete it this year. And again, they, they are already giving us a. Kind of a, a push. It, it should have happened, it should be happening next week.
Should, I mean, should we put this to a motion then? Or how, how is the best way that we define what date we're doing?
Well, um, let's keep it democratic. Let's just keep, let's just do, been, if it's, if it's about. Is, is a vote just the cleanest way to do this? Vote works, okay. So we already had, it's, it sounds like then at that point we're just moving to January. Cause we have three antis and then we have, unless anyone, it's one, two, Anne and I are on in December. Oh, right. So upon this, everything votes.
Three for January.
Two for December. And Candace will say she can do either.
Right. So then, so pretty much we're going to January then, right? Is that how that, that the either majority works?
That would.
I don't really know how to count either vote.
That, that seems fair unless either says. Yeah.
I, I agree and I respect with your opinion and as somebody who prefers January, like. I, I can make December work. It's just, you know, I on it. I've got a lot on my plate. It sounds like Nick has a lot on his plate, uh, if it's gonna be just twenty minutes. Of argle bargle, then sure. You know, but I think we should have people pick dates.
All right.
No difference.
I appreciate that, Jared. So let's, let's just, let's just pick a date around the room. Nick.
January.
Kim.
December.
Jeff.
January.
Cindy.
December.
December.
January.
December.
What do we got? Candace. Reach out to Candace tomorrow.
Okay.
And, um, I will see which date she prefers and then that will be.
What if we get you to put us as the first on the work session agenda? So that like we're in and out of it.
In, in December.
Yeah. Does that change anybody?
Yeah, this would, this would be the first item on the, this would be right at six.
Please don't tell her that she's the deciding vote.
I won't. But she must answer.
Call her right now.
Can I have her one more thought? Sorry. If it's really twenty minutes of, what did you say? Argle bargle?
Argle bargle.
I want that to make the minutes.
Yeah.
Kidding, actually. I would rather.
Hoopla today, I'm sorry.
No worries. Like twenty minutes of a work session doesn't seem like. That meaningful to me. I would rather have. An hour to talk with Ben and the rest of the trustees about parking, for instance, if it was a narrow conversation where we could. I don't know, it, it just seems surface level to do twenty minutes of the whole list of things that you just rattled off, Jared.
Right. We don't know that it's gonna be twenty minutes. This could be a very in-depth, meaningful conversation.
Actually, no, we were given fifteen minutes.
So.
For next week, so.
So I think if it's December, um, work session, there'll be more time allocated because there's not much else on the December work session. If it's the January regular meeting. It's probably that twenty, maybe thirty minutes because they are gonna have other stuff that they have to move on to within their allotted timeframe. So. If you're looking for a. Opportunity for a more in-depth conversation, I would say the December option would be a better option.
And objectively speaking, Jeff, you've been here the longest, Nick, you've been here for a while too. Have these discussions ever gone longer in your memory than twenty to thirty minutes?
Yes.
Not under Ben, not under Ben, but before that, absolutely.
Yeah.
We'd have very long work sessions with trustees when they happen. They didn't happen very frequently. But when they happened, they were very in-depth and well-run and we usually could get through two or three agenda items. With some depth. Now. I think that's twenty minutes per agenda item for an hour long work session. Does that sound?
Yeah.
Yeah. If we were to peel off like HCC parking, great twenty minute discussion, we could all be prepared. We could hear them in their concerns and we could maybe give the perspective of, of a P and Z member for. What we see in applications, but. Jared had a long list of, of things they're interested in talking about and I would not want to tackle that whole list or even attempt in twenty minutes.
We have two items.
Parking and?
Parking and setbacks on one thirty-three.
And the, okay, I heard a longer list, but if, if that was.
There, there were three items that were not applicable to us that were given to us, uh, by accident. By, by new, by new trustees.
Okay, okay. That's, well, that's helpful to hear too.
So three of the five are not applicable. And then we have, then we do have some things internally based on conversations that Jared has kind of noted. So there, so I, I, I guess there is, there are two formal items as requested by BOT. And then some items that would be helpful for us as a commission is identified by Jared, which I, I agree with, so.
So that, that's really helpful. Thanks, Nicholas. I mean. Maybe my point still stands that if we wanted to take twenty minutes and discuss one of them, it, it might be more meaningful than trying to do. Ten minutes on each and, you know, so, but that was really helpful. Thanks.
So, so, so with that, if, if you want a meaningful conversation, is this, are you saying you're willing to switch your vote to December? And be the tiebreaker?
If it falls on December, I, I will do my best to be there. I think what swayed my vote was the fact that if we didn't have Cindy. Or Jared or Nick, we're losing a lot of like experienced weight on the commission for that work session. So, you know, hearing Jared could make twenty minutes or a half an hour in December. You know, great to have his perspective there for, for something like a meaningful work session, so. If it ends up being December, you won't hear me complain.
Now the pressure's all on you, Jared.
What up, Veep?
Thanks, Jeff.
You know, you know what it's busy feels like.
Yeah, I guess. If we are gonna spend our time with this and there is potential for there to be more meaning in the meeting for December. I'd rather have my time be a little bit more valuable in that aspect, so. With that, I will transition my vote to December and let's just get this out of the way.
January it is.
Argle bargle.
Can we have some argle bargle shirt, T-shirts made up with numbers?
It's gotta be in my handwriting. It just looks fun.
Send, send it over.
Okay. Thank you all for your flexibility and willingness. I, 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 I do think we get this, we get this twice a year, right? Um, it's opportunity, so to have it be more of a talking with rather than a talking at or just listening. I, I think it's for all the hard work that this group puts in, it seems to be a, a, a better opportunity for us. And I, and I'm sorry that not everybody can attend, but to be honest. That January date rolls around, I'm pretty sure that some folks will not be able to attend that as well.
There's no guarantee.
There's no, there's no guarantee. Yeah, so. Any closing additional comments on that?
Argle bargle is really in the dictionary.
Yeah.
I like it.
Really?
I like it a lot.
You just made that up.
No.
Can you give us a definition for?
Like hoopla.
As it's part of our, uh. Closing.
Hoopla on the dictionary?
Copious but meaningless talk or writing or nonsense. There you go.
I'm, I'm hereby against argle bargle.
That literally describes everything I give you guys.
There's argy bargy too.
It's RG, it's with a G.
Oh, I'm sorry, RG.
RG bargy.
I see.
It's more popular over across the pond.
You got, you got more of these?
Yeah, it's on the internet.
What's the internet?
North Dakota, man, we barely say any actual words.
Okay, I'm reeling us in. This is too much fun for planning commission. And we're half an hour late in commissioner comments. Do we, or is there any more?
Staff update still anymore? Isn't that next?
Do you guys have any staff updates?
Thank you, Steph.
Excellent update. Commissioner comments. Anyone, anyone? Uh, I've got one, um, glad to share that the Chocolate Spark Master Plan was approved by the BOT on Tuesday. Document will be up. I think it was, um. Again, I think we was very honored to be part of that team, but I, I think I'm. again, I think we was very honored to be part of that team, but I, I think I'm excited to, to see the center of our town become uh, a little more interesting, a little bit more formal and especially that now the improvements will include Fourth Street as well. So we will have our first festival street. Um, with partial closing, um, dates is part of our downtown core.
Nice.
So it's a little, a little share. It'll be available on the website sometime soon for your viewing pleasure.
Nice job.
Since you brought up Tuesday night, I do have two updates then. Um, besides Chaco's Park. Um, the trustees also, um, extended the public improvements deadline for Little Blue Preschool. Um, due to rising costs, they needed to, uh, go get a loan for the work. That process took a bit, so, um, they requested a extension granted. And then the trustees also approved the, um, modified, um, inclusionary housing requirements on Tuesday night. So those will take effect in essentially thirty days. Um, so they were grateful. Um, they only made one minor tweak from what you guys sent up. And that was, I believe, an oversight where, um, four-unit rental projects didn't have any, um,
Cap?
A- any requirement to provide affordable housing. And so they said, they said, well, on that one, we want to require one AMI unit for a four-unit rental project. So.
Interesting.
So Jared's rental loop is closed.
So we were gonna make our.
Argle bargle.
Argle bargle.
Um, and, and on that, if I could add, you know, now that we're talking about this, this meeting with the trustees, just in closing, you know, a lot of intelligent people in this group, and I think we all labored pretty hard over, you know, Jared was, you know, provided so much help to us on affordable housing and it was still a lift. I think one of the big takeaways was we had all really kind of wished for, asked, you know, wished that we had had someone to guide us. Someone, you know, to inform us outside of our limited knowledge. In terms of that parking item coming up, maybe just remember that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I just, I agree with you, Nick. Um, and I'm going to try, um, a different tack on the HCC parking conversation. And if I break things and blow things up, I'm not too worried about it.
You have my interest. I look forward to seeing that.
Yeah. I don't need you to follow to say what I'm going to say.
Alright. Kim, you had a hand up there? Or are you just pumping your fist over parking discussion?
That was a thumbs up.
Okay.
Go for it.
Awesome. Right on. With that, I don't need a motion. This meeting is over. Thank you all for your time and effort. Appreciate seeing you all. Thank you. Thank you.